So we will try to be efficient and conscious of the time you've already spent here today. Let's begin with the superintendent's information, Dr. Miller.
Yes, just a couple of things I would like to comment on this evening is that we continue to take students who are interested in our extended school year programs and our speed camps this summer, as well as our CTE middle school summer program. So we're excited to have the opportunity to offer students and families a summer school piece that will be rigorous and fun for our students to keep engaged. And that will take place due to 20 seconds of the license fee. And again, just to remind the board that the School Building Authority Board will be presented on Monday. So we'll continue to be updated on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Moments permission. Pete, you want to kick us off?
I'm sure we'll hear from these young ladies here shortly, but congratulations to our state championship cheerleaders. That's really about it that I can think of right now.
Simone, yes, the cheerleaders, so I'll let them come and speak for themselves.
Grace?
Well, I think congratulations are in order for the girls' swim team and the Bridge Street Boys Basketball Team. And also, we had presentation a month or two ago about the grant that our jail pollers got. And there was a nice article in today's paper about the students wanting to build a robot and make it function and some of the pieces of that grant, the kits that grant bought.
Thank you. Chris?
And I think congratulations to our cheerleaders for all they've done. And also the boys and girls swimming teams, girls won, boys were second. And the wrestling team got there. I was so excited for Steve Mitchell. They got their season in and they're going to the state, so congratulations.
Mr. Croft, one thing I failed to mention, Tridelfia Girls Basketball Team won the PAC-A championship too, so congratulations to them as well.
You know, our band is working hard too. They've got a program coming up here May 14th. And they've been putting in a lot of hours and a lot of practice time and really plan to make it something special this year.
Well, it's nice to be talking about sports and things that our kids are accomplishing again that had been put on hold for far too long. I want to congratulate Dr. Miller and the team for the app that's out there that is pretty spectacular. I've been tooling around with it and if anybody wants to know what's going on with Ohio County Schools, it's there. There's calendaring. You can make it a specific pool. There are push notifications. It's done really quite well. And I think David for the hard work he's doing on a number of occasions. I mean, not only working with the barns and construction projects, but looking at bus scheduling software. Mr. Crum, you are putting in quite the effort and I don't want to feel unnoticed by the board. Appreciate all that you're doing for us.
Yeah, I'm happy that, thank you, Grace. I know there's a lot.
It is easy to take that for granted and I try and I don't do a great job of it, but it's amazing the amount of work that goes on behind the scenes with board members and central office. One quick example is Mr. Bennet working with Mr. Crum, working with McKinley, working with everybody else on our team to say, can we maximize our HVAC expenditure just to somehow get some reimbursement in light of the COVID cares that I, and try to shake loose some other dollars for other projects that are a priority to us. And the one thing that I can say, having been on this board for a few years, and that I learned, I didn't know this till I was on the boards, how hard everybody really works. It's easy to just see a monthly meeting and presume that they may, the folks aren't doing as much as you might like them to. And then you get behind a curtain going, geez, you guys haven't stopped. And I know Dr. Miller has not stopped the past year with, as well as our teachers and service personnel, is we have such a lot here. So we've got a great team. I'm looking forward to getting back there as a chairman. Do we have any delegations tonight? Unfortunate. So we have a parade of champions tonight. State champions, cheerleaders.
I do. I'm still very excited to have Wheeling Park High School state champion cheerleaders here this evening. And Mr. Rogers, if you could please introduce the coach and the team. And I could go on and on and on about Wheeling Park cheerleaders.
And rightfully so. Mr. Croft, board members of the boards, Dr. Miller, Mr. Jones, central office personnel, and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce to you head coach Shawna Shepherd, assistant coaches Christine Taylor and Kaylee Shealy, and the 2020 West Virginia SSAC Triple A Cheer Champions. We are so very proud of their accomplishments and their representation of Ohio County Schools and Wheeling Park High School. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Shawna Shepherd and her staff in the 2020 West Virginia SSAC Triple A Cheer State Champions. Come on up, ladies, tie in here. Before, Miss-
I can't say ladies tonight because I don't think-
I can say, yes, yes. Thank you. Before she gets a chance to speak, Shawna does a very nice job of explaining all the details and what they do, but just a little tidbit here, she's making it very difficult and the cheer, the ladies and the gentlemen, cheer team, on the, we're running out of room at the gym on their pictures and everything. So we have to do some refiguring. So that's a, that's a good problem. Thank you. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, board members, Dr. Miller. We are missing a few of our team members, but I'm going to go ahead and name the ones that are here. We have several who dance to other sports and one who is unfortunately in quarantine until state wrestling. So we're just making do with what we have, but it's been the longest season we've ever had and we're not done yet. So first we have senior Cameron Miller, junior Olivia Charlton, sophomore Catherine Lequere, sophomore Germany Edmonds, junior Savannah Turner Davis, sophomore, my mask, Elena Taylor, sophomore Hannah McKeegan, freshman A.J. Walters, freshman Savita Hooper, and sophomore Jillian Connors. My assistant coaches had to work this evening, so I do apologize that they weren't there, but I just appreciate all the support for the kids all year. We started in August. Am I right on that? It seems so long ago. And we had our break right before states and then we somehow whipped ourselves into shape in four weeks with what we normally do in three and a half months. And they were able to be victorious again here in Huntington three weeks ago. And we're very, very proud of their accomplishments. It's been a very long season and no stunts this year. So it was definitely a different year for everybody across the state, but we were just happy to get a season in and to be able to start, have regionals, and have states. We did not get to have OVACs due to the number of teams unable to participate. So hopeful for another good year next year and hopefully we'll be back here next year and give Mr. Rogers more trouble finding where to hang the pictures in the wall. But next year we will actually be on that, so that'll be a new endeavor for us. Now to find storage. Right, Mr. Rogers?
Find storage.
Yep. So, but thank you so much for all your support this year and all the other years, so keep coming back.
Great job, ladies.
Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations. We're really proud of you, so. Congrats, Shawna.
Thank you.
Did you say the board meetings? I do. We love you too.
Okay, that was a terrific moment. These young ladies did a great deal of hard work in a very short period of time. I think certainly epitomized lemonade out of lemon and layering state championship for us yet again. So on reports and follow-up actions, Mr. Jones?
Just the work session was our, uses our bond update, so I'll defer to Mr. Crum for the most. Unless anybody has any questions about anything.
Nothing on the bond update, kind of move on to the school bus routing plan. Mr. Crum, I think you have some thoughts on that?
All right, the papers that I gave out to you show the progression of the proposals that were put forth by Edgelog. When the search started out, we had five companies that we spoke to and along the way, they either weeded themselves out because they weren't, they weren't able to do what we were asking for, or they didn't have what works here in West Virginia. So the last one is the most recent proposal from the Edgelog company. You can see there are differences in there between the three from the work session that was had on, I think it was November 24th, and the comments that were made at that time. The change between the November 23rd and November 30th proposal had to do with the school bell time optimization study. At that time, it was $15,000 was taken off of there. I worked with them and sent the information based off of Mrs. Adorhal, the information that you wanted presented to them. I spoke with, at that time, three companies. One company was willing to move forward with the information I was able to supply, working to get us the information that was presented last time, where those numbers came from. The other two companies wanted $10,000 to do the high-level report that we presented last time. I wanted to make sure that all I'm doing is providing the information that was asked. In no way am I saying one way or the other whether Ohio County Schools thinks we need to do this or do that. That's, you know, I'm presenting the information that was requested. One of the reasons we went to go with Edgelog as opposed to some of the others, one, they already work with Weavis. Weavis being very difficult to work with. If you speak with Patrick or Seth Bell and things that they have to try and get to work and companies that work with them. They're also already in West Virginia. Some of the counties they work with, Canawea Wood, Wetzel, and Berkeley County. The GPS equipment provided the quickest return times. There's a local rep here in West Virginia to answer questions. The potential of the expansion of services like real-time bus video availability, that was one of the things that Mr. Croft at that meeting was interested in. The parent app that is available with parent notifications. So one of the things that we feed a lot of phone calls are we're trying to drop the child off and nobody's there. Well, they don't know. They thought it was already there. When is it coming? Well, this app provides the parent the ability to know when it's coming into their area. So that would help with our secretaries at the schools, principals at the schools, the operations center of the parents. They can set a circle and once the bus enters that circle, they get an alert that your child's a mile away, five minutes away, based on how they have the app set up. Another thing is the willingness to work with us on the school start times. You know, as was requested, you know, taking that higher level look to give us an idea. And just to give a little background on the start times. One of the reasons we're able to do what we do with so few buses is because how it's set up already. We take our biggest population that is able to be on the bus the longest amount of time and that's the first pickup we do. So we have buses leave the lot around 5:15 in the morning to go out to the six o'clock pickups and then drop off at seven o'clock. So because we're able to do that, that allows us to get ahead of the game in picking everybody else up. So they were very surprised we were able to do what we were doing with so few buses. One of the other things that this software company had that the others did not is the ability for the drivers to do their bus pre-trips on their phones. The Ohio County Schools has a phone for each one of the school bus drivers in cases of emergency and stuff. And they can document their pre-trips, which is an additional safety measure that we're able to do for Ohio County Schools. So the three options, the three proposals that are before, you can see they vary greatly in their costs. The cost that was spoke about last time of $120,000 was again for two years, not just the one-year time. If you look at just the routing software, the routing software part of it is $8,000. The GPS part, $689 per bus, or sorry, that's a shipping and handling free, $396 per bus. The 55 buses is one of the most expensive parts of the software package.
Which page are you looking at right now?
Uh, that one was the April 1st.
The front page.
First page, okay. Thank you, thank you.
So the difference between the 23rd and the 30th had a couple of the things taken off, dealing with implementation of, and how many hours of training hours were included with what you were doing. So the April 1st is the most recent, as you can see there. Total first year costs of $43,469, an annual fee each subsequent year of just under $30,000. Below that, you'll see recurring remote services. All of them have prices for amount of hours of additional help and work along the way available. And then they also put it at $105 an hour to work, which was something that Mr. Croft had asked for. What would it look like if we only worked and paid per hour to do these things? I did reach out to the company that you had suggested. I can do a 90-minute presentation from them and watch. When I asked them if they had or did anything in West Virginia, they did not. He did the routing software only. The GPS, they would have to bring in a different company. And they did not work with Weavis. So, I mean, I can continue to talk with them, but-
I just wanted to pursue all of the available options and even ask the question, like even if you haven't worked with Weavis, could you work with Weavis? I mean, I don't understand all of the things that he did, so that's why I presented that to you, so.
Well, and I appreciate that. So this, this is why I've, you know, presented the Edgelog company and the reasons behind and that we have spoken with several other companies and what happened along the way. Are there additional questions?
A couple. So you, what you're saying is of all the ones that you've listened to and talked to, this seems like the best option in your mind for what we want?
Yes.
And so it would be for the first year, $6,000 just for the route management? So that would kind of help us optimize our school routes?
Yes.
And it looks like some of our biggest fees would be the GPS and the real-time information for parents about where their child buses, is that correct?
Yes.
So thank you for putting this together, Mr. Crum, but I'm going to ask you your opinion whether you want to give it or not. So as you, you kicked these tires for quite some time now. And you've dealt with Edgelog, you know our bus drivers and the routes, our parents and where, you know, the layout of our county. Do you see a benefit to the county, to the cost of this product, of this, of the software?
Yes. I would like to make sure we're using it most efficiently. You know, we're able to do what we're able to do with the 31 buses because we are very efficient. Cindy Vane does a phenomenal job of working with our bus drivers. And, you know, several times throughout this year, we've had bus drivers on quarantine, students, and buses, and all that kind of stuff. And, I mean, she works magic, you know, some days, making sure we have enough people available. This also allows, if we have a sub-bus driver come in, the route will be right there. You hit print and there's all your drop-offs, your stop-off times, even if it was changed yesterday. By this working with our Weavis software, as a student enters Ohio County Schools that night, it will also be picked up and added to the route, which would help as opposed to making a phone call, making a phone call, making a phone call, seeing which, it all helps with all of that and will streamline that process.
I think we looked at this once before. In fact, we purchased a program once before. And it, it, the amount of work it took for somebody to input all the information, it wasn't possible to do it. So the fact that it would integrate with the Weavis system would make a huge difference. It would be so beneficial because you just don't have anybody that can spend that kind of time to implement everybody's address and where they're living and all that. So for, like, the $16,000, would we get that much done and then be able to work with that? Or are we talking like the 40-some thousand?
I would have to go back and check that. I know this pricing is based off of everything. So if we only did part of it, I'm, I can't say for sure, but I'm sure some of that would probably change. But I could ask that. You'll see those two $5,000 one-time implementation and project management fee and the one-time system build from information supplied by the district. That's to help make sure that it's set up and running initially as before. I think there was, I don't know what the total amount of money that was spent, but then it just didn't work because the additional time and money was not put in to help make sure it was a success.
I am getting texts that people can't hear or members on FTE and the ICOC center now.
So they're based on 55 buses because they think we need 55 buses to change times. What if once we had it routed, we wouldn't need that many? We could, you know?
Well, the 55 buses is a combination between our 31 regular buses, our, I think, 12 special education buses-
Oh, so we do have 55.
Then our substitute buses.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, the 31 number are just the buses we use to do the regular route.
Okay.
So that's why that number 31 is there.
Well, I thought this was interesting too, though, that just the routing was $6,000. We thought originally that, you know, that that route, that thought we were giving was just the routing optimization for that big dollar number in the newspaper. So then it was the subsequent annual fee for that, but we might not need to pay that yearly. I mean, if we feel like we've got an optimal bus route after a year or two, maybe we don't have to continue on annual basis.
The software amount of 8,000 would be a yearly, would be yearly. And then the GPS cost would be a yearly.
Do we have something right now? Do we have a software system right now?
No, the only thing that we have, we do have a, we have GPS on our bus that I'm able to see where a bus is, but no software or anything.
And one, a couple of other questions I had. You say if they enter, if you go with the GPS part, if they enter a certain circle that the parents would know?
Yeah, the parent has, can set up.
Okay. What about in areas like we've had with our, with our Chromebooks where they don't, can't get access? Is that an issue?
I mean, I, West Virginia is West Virginia. I couldn't stand here and say we're going to have 100% coverage. But this company works with school systems in West Virginia. The school systems that we have spoken to and Cindy spoke with, we're pleased with the results that they had in working with this company and how the software works. So my guess is there's probably going to be dead spots somewhere. That's just the nature of West Virginia.
There's a distinction between not having internet access and, and recovery. This would be where you wouldn't have cell phone and that's far less than our internet.
Correct.
And one last thing, you mentioned real-time bus video.
Yes, that would be something down the road. It is, at this time right now, cost expensive.
Okay.
We would have to add, the good thing is with the cameras we have, we would have to add one camera to our bus that the others would tie into at that point.
So the current, if I'm understanding this, the current year's projected cost is $43,469. And then we would expect an annual charge of $29,700. Is that accurate?
If we want what they have on here right now, yes.
As a parent, the GPS, I would find incredibly useful. So, Mr. Bennet, is there room in this year's budget for something like this? Or should we wait until next year's budget if we decide to go down this road?
In the current year? We could, we could handle that.
This year?
Yes.
So then it brings me to Dr. Miller. What's your recommendation?
I, I love the idea of the GPS piece and being able to see if we can make anything more efficient done here in Ohio County Schools. I think it would be helpful for both the town and our bus drivers and of course our parents to notice these are.
It seems to make sense from the bus drivers, the parents, the kids. Plus for us to genuinely understand the early start times and what the software needs to be implemented. And, and a deep dive study, not a $35,000 foot look at, you know, what would this mean if we added this?
Right now, if you notice this most recent one, the, if you go back to the first one that was presented on November 23rd, school bell time optimization study, one scenario, that was initially a cost of $15,000. I would continue to negotiate with having that done. We've provided a lot of information to start with and if they have the information already, I can see that not being that much. Having had conversations with them and, you know, bartering and working with numbers and, you know, trying to do what we can to do what's best for Ohio County Schools. So this package does not include that, but that's something that we can add to it.
So we could still keep it under $50,000, maybe?
I would do my best, but-
I'd say take it or leave it. Talk to them.
Well, I've got to believe that I'd be more willing to deal with your customer.
And they've been willing to work with, again, what two other companies I spoke to wanted to charge $10,000 for. So.
So, I mean, I, I'm certainly in favor of this, although it does overall recommendations from Dr. Miller. Should I have a vote in favor of accepting the April 1st, 2021 proposal from Edgelog?
Second, with the provision of adding, what was it?
The optimization study.
Optimal time?
I'm adding the discretion of Mr. Crum-
Right.
To pay the best-
Thank you.
Right.
Price for that study. So first and second, any further discussion?
Mr. Crum, could you share what real-life time looks like, when we see this number, we'd be able to see this?
They say six months. My goal would be to try and have it ready for next school year.
Would be ready out.
But with the later school start time of being towards the end of August, my push would be to have it ready to go at the beginning of the school year. Again, that would be using what we do right now. And then once that information is all put in and done, then we would look at the optimization side of things.
All those in favor, please stick your hand up like saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Crum, thank you. I know you've been a long working. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Look forward to getting to it. All right, the next I want to agenda is the Prevention Resource Officers. I think Mr. Jones has thoughts for us on my proposal, what we want for.
Yes. So as you know, we've had a lot of discussion this year about PRO officers and their contracts and where they're best utilized. And the board has asked that I make a proposal of how we would like to work things next year. So that is what I did and I've sent this to Chief and Sheriff Howard. Let them know that we would be discussing this tonight. If this is something that you support, then we would make a formal ask to them later this week for these positions and then go from there. So what I will be asking for is at Wheeling Park High School to have one Wheeling Police Department officer and one Ohio County Sheriff's Department deputy at Tridelfia and Steenrod to share one Wheeling Police Department person. Police Department person, at Wheeling Middle and Ritchie, one Wheeling PD person, Bridge Street, Elm Grove, one Wheeling PD, Warwood Middle, Warwood Elementary, one Wheeling PD. We are going to move our alternative center, as well as some other things that will grow into our annex at Tridelfia. So I would ask that we have a person that is assigned to the Ohio County Learning Center and Woodsdale Elementary, a person, Ohio County Sheriff's Department at Madison, that's currently in Ohio County Sheriff's Department. Andrea Trio really wants it to be that specific person, which I've let Officer Howard, or Sheriff Howard know as well. Same at Wheeling Park. They really want it to be Chad Clatterbuck as the Sheriff's Department person to stay there, along with a Wheeling PD person that's yet to be determined, and then one person from the Ohio County Sheriff's Department to rotate between Middle Creek, West Liberty, and Bethlehem. And then I made a couple comments there at the bottom, and if you have any questions, please ask.
So have we always had a Wheeling Police, Police Department at the high school?
No, we have in the past before, but not recently. So if you remember when Jim Braden was there, he was Wheeling PD. But since then, it's been one Ohio County Sheriff's Department person, and then recently, the past two years, we've had two Ohio County Sheriff's Department. I think it would work optimally if we had one of each. And they, we did find out today, they do have jurisdiction at Wheeling Park High School.
That was a question.
They both do.
Okay.
And Chris, just one other, an update on some recent events that have, we have pulled back based on the cost of the deputies and the relative cost of the Wheeling Police Officers, both being highly-trained officers and great PROs. It was explained to us that in this upcoming year, that the County Commission may be willing to provide some officers at $60,000 each. So where that puts us with the configuration Mr. Jones has placed before the board is we have restored the total number of PROs we had previously. We have greater flexibility in moving them around, and the overall savings to the schools will be in excess of $200,000 annually.
Good.
Is that correct, Mr. Jones?
I, I don't know that. Okay, well then, yes.
So this is two total, I mean, nine total?
Yes.
Okay. And we had thought at one point that we could go down to seven, but we now think that we.
I think this is the best way to get total coverage in our county and utilize both the Wheeling PD and the Sheriff's Department.
So if the commission does not support it?
Does not what?
They don't support it with some funding?
Well, they will be now, because I think the discussion with the commission and the sheriff was, initially, the concern communicated to me is that the only reason they would have had these officers was for the purpose of PROs. So therefore, that triggered the complete reimbursement law. And I think Sheriff Tom has talked with the commissioners, finding a way that, to the extent they're not boots-on-the-ground with the school system, that there's, there's the ability to use these officers in other capacities. And so I think that is will allow some flexibility in pulling it back from 90 to 60.
Okay. Makes sense. Okay.
And, and Mr. Jones, I'd, I'd ask him to really take some time and look at our footprint, and what is the best configuration of police officers and personalities in schools. We're moving some things around with the alternative learning. How do we best provide coverage and flexibility? Because we don't know when a situation will arise. I mean, when will it? Earlier today, I heard something, you know, there was some static on social media on a school unrelated to Wheeling, Ohio County Schools. But that made me, you know, cause a need for, you know, bringing additional officers to different facilities. And based on our current agreement with Ohio County Commission and the work we're working, the agreement with the city, is it gives us the flexibility in those exceptional circumstances to move officers around. And Mr. Jones, being familiar with some of the deputy sheriffs that are outstanding, PROs, is to try to keep them in these roles with the best kind of fitting our, our kids. So, did, do any of the other board members have any questions on where we are today on the PROs and Mr. Jones' recommendation? Not, not hearing any other questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the proposal as submitted by Mr. Jones, so that he can formally memorialize those to both the city and the county for our PROs for the 2021, 2022 school year. We're good through this year.
Okay, so moved?
May I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Jones, thank you for that work, and that running that down isn't an easy task. All right, we have personnel, and there are some personnel issues that I may have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Representative 69A-4 to discuss the personnel matter.
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, first and second, if we go into executive session, of course, in accordance with Representative 69A-4 to discuss the personnel matter, the panelists vote at 6:40, 5:00 p.m. We are returning.